Meetings tonight, and the first one we have is Resolution Number 21 R 33. A resolution declaring authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and for construction of tennis and pickleball courts at Siskiyou Park, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. We are going to ask for time on this resolution. Paul, do you want to speak on it anyway and tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, well, the, we've had another really good meeting with the Nets Committee, and we've firmed everything up in terms of how we want this to look. And our Kevin Noble has, is putting the bid packages together. We'll proceed with advertising. The bid opening will be June 16th. And I suppose it's appropriate to let people know that we have three members who couldn't join us tonight, either because of vacation or emergency work situations, Mr. Hargit, Mr. Stock, and Mr. Fetterman. And so in deference to that, we will, it appears council will, and we'll ask for time on each one of the resolutions for tonight, so that we can have a more full council to address those in two weeks. So we'll ask for time on that one.
Jim, we have you for the second resolution.
Okay, thank you. We'll open a finance committee at 6:08. Our first resolution tonight is Resolution 21 R 34, a resolution authorizing the expenditure funds towards New Franklin share of the cost for formation and operation of the South Summit Dispatch Center by the South Summit Council of Governments and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is, we'll talk about it more in a couple of weeks, but again, it's just part of the process and funding that that program out there. And our share is 40.8%. So we'll be looking to send over $213,822.60. And again, we'll be asking for time on that. Any questions, anybody? Second resolution.
Jim, I apologize, Mr. Cots. We're going to have to, we're going to need an amendment on that one in two weeks. The, let's see, one, two, three, the fourth whereas clause references that the period, the budget for the period, June 1st through September 30th, and that should be May 1st.
Through September?
Yes. So it'll be five months. And we'll also need that same amendment in Section 1, the last sentence of Section 1. We'll say for the period from May 1st, 2021. All right, thank you.
Okay, then Resolution 21 R 35, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to apply for a JAG LE grant for the purchase of a police cruiser and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Are we going to ask for time on this or withdraw it?
I think we can ask for time on this. And then if we need to withdraw it, we could do that in two weeks. But I think we can affirm the fact that that we expected to be council's intent to proceed on this. And so I think we can take it up on the 6th.
I agree. This is, this is for a 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe four by four. The grant, the vehicle, the cost of vehicles, $46,997. And our part of the grant will be $11,749.25. And then we'll have a grant riding fee for a Gatchel for $850. So for $12,599.25, we'll be able to get a new cruiser, which is fantastic, saving us two thirds of what we paid in the past. Captain Bickett is with us today. And is there anything you'd like to share about this, sir?
No, I don't think so. That's, that vehicle will be fully equipped. It's got the, everything we need except for the graphics, which is about, about $800 additional. We already have the radio for it. It's a vehicle we plan on purchasing next year anyway. We're just trying to get a grant for it, so.
Fantastic. And this one is, the price is higher than what we did just a couple months ago. And it looks like because we're getting the Rhino prisoner package and a federal signal mark. Why, why, why not, why didn't we get those before?
Well, those, we have all those in our Tahos now. It was, I believe, it was, the last two cruisers, it was an add-on after the fact, when we realized we needed, it was kind of a newer, newer style vehicle for us. And we didn't realize at the time that we needed that kind of package. So that's what included in the whole price this time.
Okay.
Were those 2021s the last ones we got?
Yes.
And this one, this is going to be a 2022, huh?
Right, right. If we can order it in the fall, it'll be here by, these things take a while to get in, so.
And, and the base price is the same for 2022 versus 2021, based on the, the special pricing you were able to get?
Yes, the state bid pricing, I talked to the sales guy that we work with all the time, and he wasn't exactly sure on the 2022 prices yet. So he added, I think he said 10% just to be safe. So it might come in a little less than this.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
I do.
Again, we'll ask for time on this. And last resolution is Resolution 21 R 36, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district and dispatch funds, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Again, we'll be asking for time on this. And this is the standard transfer of $200,000 from the general fund to the police fund. And the dispatch fund is $400,000 transfer. Susan, will this be, will we not be doing this fairly soon? Is this our last one?
Probably not our last one, because as you may know, the, the amount that we would normally transfer or that budget that we've created is going to be what we're, what the cost is going to, of the cog and the startup is going to take up most of that budget. So we will be doing some transfers along the way, as we usually would, to be able to pay our shares of that. And to pay any left residual contracts or what have you for the transfer over.
Okay. So, so in the future, what we'll be seeing is when we're making our payments to the cog, we're still going to be seeing the transfer funds from the general fund to the dispatch fund?
Yes, because the dispatch does not have any money revenue of its own.
Right, right. And will that be the same next year? Or will we have a different, like, line, you know, budget or appropriation or whatnot for that?
Right. I'm thinking that possibly next year, we might want to keep the dispatch fund. We might want to just pay that out of the general fund, because we do have dispatch lines in the general fund. But that was something that we, we haven't discussed yet, but it's kind of in the back of my mind, because that would make it a lot easier. And we're not going to need those extra, you know, the personnel lines and all the other lines that are in the dispatch fund.
Right, right. Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns? Again, well, when we get around to it, we'll ask for time. And we will close the finance committee meeting at 5:19. Oh, no, that's today's date, 6:15.
We'll open the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:15. Resolution Number 21 R 37, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal resurfacing funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, for the resurfacing of Cleveland Maslin Road from Eastern Road to Grill Road, which will be Phase 1, and from Grill Road to Surface Road, which is Phase 2, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Paul, do you want to speak on this before we ask for time?
Done mute, Paul.
All of our AMATS approved eligible roads have been paved recently, and Cleveland Maslin will be the next one up. So they've invited us to, they invited everybody to, to submit proposals. This will authorize us to submit those proposals. We, it's similar to South Main, it'll be broken into, to two phases, because the, there's a cap on how much you can get on these AMATS grants. I can't offhand remember whether it was 800 or 900, but 1,000. So we're breaking into two phases, breaking into two years. And the total project will be about $1.7 million. And the AMATS money will be about $1.2 million that we'll get for that paving. And over those two years, our share is going to be about 430,000. So that, this is, we anticipate approval. And, and it looks like we'll be able to, to get close to $1.3 million for paving on Cleveland Maslin in 2023, 2024. But I'd ask for time on this.
Okay. And this would be Eastern Road to Grill Road, the first phase, which would be 2023, and Grill Road to Surface Road, which would be Phase 2 for 2024. And then the funding from New Franklin for the first phase would be 155,553. And the funding for the second phase would be 275,350?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to ask for time on that. We'll close the meeting at 6:17. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to talk about in your committees? If not, we will call the meeting to order and all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you do the roll call?
Mr. Cots? Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Hogg?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Say, can we excuse Captain Bickett?
Yes.
Thanks, Captain.
Hey, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of May 5th.
Second.
All in favor?
It's a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
And then Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I think you're going to have to do that again next meeting. I don't think you could pass that with three votes.
Well, we have, you have Ms. Norris that you're ignoring. Oh, she weren't here. Oh.
Yeah, it's no big deal. We just have to put it on for the agenda for next week or two weeks.
You want me just then to skip the approval of the financials, because we're going to have to do the same thing?
Anything to move financials?
Well, you got four people here for that.
Okay. Then I'd ask for a motion to approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the financials for April 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
And I think, Katie, do you have any public comments?
There are no comments or questions right now.
Sounds good. Then we will begin with the first reading for community development. Kelly?
A resolution declaring, a resolution declaring New Franklin to, this is all different, declaring, authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and for construction of tennis and pickleball courts at Siskiyou Park, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Thank you. We are going to ask for time on this resolution.
Should we have this resolution amended to?
This needs to be amended.
To remove declaring?
Yes.
Make it easier for Kelly?
And I think we take out the word and between bids and for in the second line.
So we're going to take time and have it amended. Am I correct?
Yes, just the, the title to it. Yes, will be amended. And we're asking for time.
And our second resolution, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds towards New Franklin share of the cost for formation and operation of the South Summit Dispatch Center by the South Summit Council of Governments, in declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. And Madam Vice President, we ask to take time on this resolution, 21 R 34, as amended.
Time is granted. Resolution Number 21 R 35, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to apply for a JAG LE grant for the purchase of a police cruiser, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee, and we will ask for time for Resolution 21 R 35.
Time is granted. Resolution Number 21 R 36, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district and dispatch funds, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is also assigned to the finance committee, and we will also ask for time on this. Resolution 21 R 36, please.
Time is granted. Resolution Number 21 R 37, Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for federal resurfacing funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, for the resurfacing of Cleveland Maslin Road from Eastern Road to Grill Road, Phase 1, and from Grill Road to Surface Road, Phase 2, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
We are going to ask for time on this resolution, and time is granted for that. And I think what we have next, as David always says, is our favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Judy. First of all, in the bad news category, Congle Road was not approved for emergency OPWC funding. So we are some degree back to the drawing board. I sent a request for a meeting out to Summit County Executive's Office, the Summit County Engineer, and also the Mayor of Norton, to set up a meeting for, to determine how this can get done this year. I heard back from the engineer, who indicated likelihood of funds, but not until 2022. And I told him that we didn't feel that was soon enough, but we appreciated that he got back to us. I have not heard from the other two entities. I am working on, I sent out some requests to try to get a meeting with Mayor Zeta and their city manager, Robert Fowler, next week. And I expect that I'll be able to do that. And I will report back to you on the second, what, what it's going to take. As an aside, we've had a preview of the American Rescue Plan money that will come into the city, about 1.3 million this year and the same amount about next year. But there are some significant restrictions on how that money is, can be spent. And at least initially, it looks like the guidelines that are going to apply to cities of less than 50,000 people will come out probably next week. The guidelines for larger metropolitan cities and counties came, came out about a week ago. And if the guidelines are the same, we're not going to be able to use it for payroll replacement. And there's, there's not a lot, and we could use it for revenue replacement that we lost for COVID, but we really don't have much, if any, to show there. And it may end up in the sewer water broadband bucket. And we were, we've been really hoping that that bucket would also include paving as part of infrastructure, and bridges and culverts and those things. We attended, Susan and I separately, a session from the Office of Budget Management. And I, I didn't hear anything that suggested we could use this money for roads or bridges. Susan, did you get a sense we could?
No, it, it didn't sound like that was a possibility at all.
Yeah. So that's, you know, that's discouraging. On the other hand, it's, it means that we'll probably be, we're already starting to look at, you know, what might make sense for us in some of those other areas. But having said that, I was hopeful that those funds would be used, could be used for those purposes, because I, my expectation is then that Norton would, you know, be more inclined to go ahead and put this in their budget. So I will let you know what I, on June 2nd, the fruits or lack of from that meeting, that I'm planning, trying to set up for next week. I'm sorry.
May we discuss this for a second?
Sure.
The Congle Road. I, I realize that it's an inconvenience for our citizens that live out there. And it's been two years. And you seem to be putting much more effort into this than the city of Norton. And Norton has shown very little interest, if any, in doing something with it. I can't believe that they are unable to come up with the funds to get this fixed. I, I don't know that is, it makes sense for us to have our mayor spending his time, his valuable time, trying to fix something in Norton, in another city. Again, I get that is, is an inconvenience for, for our citizens out there. I get that there's a safety issue out there with it. But it's been two years. And I, I'm sure the citizens have figured out how to, how to get around. Again, probably not the way they want to. But I just, I applaud you for all your efforts in trying to make this happen and, and being the one, the only one that, that seems to be caring to make this happen. For, you know, as far as the mayors and the other entities that are involved in it. You, you, if it wasn't for you, this wouldn't even be getting talked about. But again, I just wonder if it's really worth your time in Franklin to, you know, to deal with this.
Uh, here's my thoughts. And I appreciate what you're saying. One of the reasons, way back in this two-year-old file, I'm just pulling out here on Congle Road, is that petition that we had from about 200 people signed, most of them New Franklin residents, that it mattered to them. I know they've been paying attention every now and then. We get a comment. I got a call from a lady, her first name is Nancy, and I've spoken to her a couple of times. She just called last week, asking again, hey, you know, what's going on on Congle Road? So I'll tell you, one thought I had is that, and I, and my intention, I get it, it's, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a distraction at this point in time, in terms of the time that I've spent on it. But it may be that we need to start talking to Norton's council, as opposed to Norton's mayor. And I'm going to, so that's part of what I'm going to talk, when I talk to the mayor and the city manager, that if, if we still get this kind of stonewalled, it may be, you know, maybe the move is for our council to approach their council. And say, listen, you know, tell your people to find the money for this thing. So I guess we won't spin our wheels too much longer. But you know, well, and there's, there's a, there's a, there's sort of a lateral issue with this, and that is, who ought to be fixing these bridges in the first place? And should the county be involved in this? So there's a little bit of a precedent to this one as well, that, that kind of makes me want to push the envelope a little bit with the engineer and with the county executive, because we've got four more that we've already got a heads up on, that over the next couple years are going to need replaced. And this one, this is like the, this is a first of a few. So, but I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Cotsen. I'll maybe have this one last conversation and come back to you guys in a couple of weeks and see maybe if council wants to kind of address their council, either by letter or something, to see if we can get some traction with their council instead of their mayor.
Oh, I think that's a good idea, because those people on the petition, some of them showed up at a meeting. Do you remember that?
Sure.
And they really are in dire need.
Yeah.
And I think like Jim says, they probably found another way around, but that's not always the, the best way. And I think a lot of them were saying that when they had healthcare issues, that it was going to be a problem getting safety services to them quickly.
All right. Paving is underway, as you probably know, and early reports are good. So there was, in the, in the roads that we're doing, one of those roads is Fairland, from Vanderhoof to the Norton Line. And one portion of that, from Rennie Court to the Norton Line, is Barbados. And that's that section over there where it's a jigsaw puzzle. So the east side of Fairland, from Rennie to Norton, is Barbados. And the west side of the road is New Franklin. And it's about a $25,000 piece. And we've been talking with Barbados, and on Monday, Mayor Judge gave us the approval that they're going to go ahead and chip, and put that money in so that we can pave both sides of Fairland. And then we'll bill them and they'll reimburse us. So that's good news for the people that, at Fairland, that, and a lot of the people that use that route to cut over to Eastern and get up to 21. Sturgeon, we did put the speed card out at Sturgeon. And, and we put it, the, they put it for traffic coming west. For some reason, it seems to me the traffic goes quick, faster going east. I don't know. Mr. Cots, you live back there, you know, maybe like, I don't know, maybe. But in any event, they're going to put it, week after next, it's going, they're going to put it for the other direction. So we'll have the results from both directions. The results were not, were good in terms of people behaving. And maybe it was, there was a discussion, Sergeant Kriener talked with one of the residents, and they said, well, you know, they started slowing down as soon as the sign went up. There were 1,443 vehicles in seven days. So there's about 200 a day that were traveling westbound on Sturgeon. And for the, if you who don't know, I mean, Sturgeon is a very short street, and it, it runs between Encino and, that's not.
Robo, robo.
Robo, yeah, yeah. So it's just, so there's about 200 cars. 86% of them were going 29 miles or less. And 98% of them were going 34 or less. And the speed limit's 25. So I guess it's fair to say, the ones that were within the speed limit, it was about 60%, well, actually about 65%. So that by itself, you know, I don't know if that would suggest a need for traffic control. We're going to see what the, when they do the eastbound travel, see what that comes up to. And, and we'll get back to you on that.
Paul, if I may suggest that we kind of put a hold on this until the, the water lines are done. I think Sturgeon probably sees more traffic like this week, when Catalina is closed to, through traffic because of the, the water construction that's going on on that street right now. And it appears to me that they'll be doing that next week also. So maybe get a true reading of the street and what they're seeing on a regular basis, that we wait until there's no construction on Catalina that might be diverting cars.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And right, as of right now, it would be set to, it would be set to go up week after, well, I'll, I'll talk to Sergeant Kriener, have him push it back a little bit. Memorial Day event, Sunday, May 30th, please come out. We got about 31 vendors, food trucks, beverage trucks, noon to 5:00. And we would love to see everybody out there. So please come out, wander around, and, and they're all local businesses, sail into summer event. So come on out and support your local businesses, please, and have some fun with us out there, the, the Sunday Memorial Day weekend. The next day, of course, is the parade, as we announced, is with, you can throw candy. And that's a big deal. And, and we will step off at 9:00, well, staging at 9:00 AM, Grace is once again, very graciously hosting us there. And the parade will step off at 10 o'clock. And as always, we'll conclude at the cemetery. This year, you've seen, and I think there'll be some good press follow-up, that the honoree is Dave Galloway, who, in most who most of you know. And his bio is on our our website, but I don't know what's more, well, I guess I do know what's more impressive, two Purple Hearts in Vietnam. But then all of the community activity that this guy has been involved with. He's just, and he just, he does it so quietly. So really, really pleased to be able to honor Dave this year. We're inviting all vets as usual and especially Vietnam vets to try to join us to honor Dave. We have a a float and we'll get as many of the vets up on there as show up. And the last thing I have to report is the return to public meetings. We've been cleared for that effective June 2nd. A lot of the things were already, June 2nd was going to be the date and then he pushed a lot of those forward, but I think June 2nd is still the date for for all the other health orders to come off. And and we asked specifically, and that is at midnight on June 2nd. So as soon as the clock turns to June 2nd, those directives are gone. We can go back to public meeting. I asked Donna Skoda, the Summit County Health Director, what her thoughts were relative from a recommendation standpoint, as far as masks are concerned. Her recommendation was from the Summit County Public Health Department that certainly if we knew everybody was vaccinated, you don't need masks. If you're not sure if everybody's vaccinated, if you can achieve social distancing, then no need, no reason for a mask. It would not be my intention to require masks. My intention at this point would be to tell everybody, find your own comfort zone. And if you're comfortable wearing a mask, put your mask on. And if you're not, don't. And don't bother each other. Keep your opinion to yourself. No, more more accurately, respect each other, which I I'm sure everybody will. And so that's my thoughts on it. We we do intend to livestream it. And and Robert Keith tells us that we could also still entertain questions from people who aren't there. I will totally defer to council on that one. Whether or not we want to say, hey, listen, if you have a comment or a question, come to the meeting. So what do you guys think?
I, for me, I think we should go back to what it was before. You come to the meeting, if you have a question or comment, you can email your question or comment to to council beforehand. But I don't think we should be monitoring the feed and and taking comments from from the feed. I think that that's very distracting to meeting and it takes away from the flow of the meeting. So so my thought is, you can email your questions, your comments and have them read into the meeting. You can come to the meeting, but I don't know that we should be monitoring the livestream. I think it's just a convenience being able to watch it live without waiting for the video to be posted.
Is there anybody on council that feels differently?
No.
All right. Well, then that's the way I'll I'll put out an announcement to that regard on the website. And and I trust that'll be sufficient as well. All right. So yeah, isn't it going to be nice being back in the room? That's
Will we be able to set this up so that all all meetings will be able to be livestreamed like like I kind of mentioned in the email, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Approval? And then have the have it all on the same format rather than, you know, this group does that, this group does that type of thing. And also be able to have it available on our website, not necessarily Facebook, where people can watch without having to have it a Facebook account or, you know.
Yeah, Katie had an idea. Katie, were you thinking about going to YouTube for this?
Yes, YouTube is actually where we post all of our videos after the fact anyway. But you can also livestream directly to YouTube and then nobody needs an account to view them.
Now, the only issue with our other meetings, which would be planning and zoning and and the BZA is we're going to have to have a cameraman there. Because we haven't needed to do that. The reason we're able to livestream is we have Robert Keith there because he has to, he has to record those, you know, for our minutes. But so we would have to check with Robert Keith or somebody else for whatever the expense would be to to do the filming on those.
Well, would it be needing to have somebody onsite or is, can we mount cameras within the in the room to be able to capture the meeting? You know, we don't need a pan and things like that, but we need to be able to see and hear is is the main, the main goal of it. You know, I just wonder if we can just have a cameras mounted to be able to show the meeting, hear the meeting and stream the meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm open to it. You know, there, I, whichever way we do it, there'll be some expense involved, but that's not the big issue. As I think about planning and zoning, I don't know about whether, you know, sometimes you have testimony. You know, are you going to be able to have, you know, a camera without a camera in person? But why don't we, I'll pass that on to Robert Keith and see what he thinks.
All right. And, you know, Katie, Katie can go to every meeting and act as the floor director.
Yeah, right.
And that actually, I would think that that's something that could be set up where if we had somebody designated, whether it's Katie or somebody else, that they'd actually be able to do that from home even. Where they could be able to switch cameras or whatnot to go on, you know, hey, I'm, let's go all crazy about this, you know. Anyway, it's just, you know, throwing out the suggestions, the things to think about and, you know, what we can do to make it better for our citizens.
All right. All right. And that is all I have from the mayor's report.
Sounds good. Finance report, Susan?
Oh, I see. We're in the same place we have been busy with GAAP. It's our, we're kind of on the last mile of getting all our GAAP information together for our GAAP financial report. And then we start on our audit, I believe, June 6 or 7, they're coming in to start on that. But we do have a balance for April, the month of April, which was $7,108,602. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Susan? Do we have anything under old business?
Hey, again.
Hey, so with with the new COVID thing, restrictions going away and everything. Do you need to officially rescind or are we to the point where you can officially rescind a state of emergency?
That was, that question was asked of the Summit County Executive, I mean Shapiro, on on Monday, there was a conference call. And the the consensus at this point is to, I think the county's intention is to follow the state's lead. And that when the state then withdraws their state of emergency, the county would would do as well. And then at that point, I think it'd be appropriate for us to follow in that regard.
Okay. And I've I've heard other cities making announcements and whatnot stating that their buildings will be open to the public starting June 2nd, back business as usual. Is that going to be the case for New Franklin? It's our entire admin staff will be back in the building instead of working from, working remotely?
We're still working on that in terms of, you know, what's, you know, I think what we've found is that it's going to be a matter of discussion, I think. It's been pretty effective the way we're doing things. You know, there's, one of the things, the recommendations relative to health orders is in Summit County and is dealing with the same thing. If everybody's vaccinated, then the recommendation is then, fine, you don't need masks. If everybody's not vaccinated, then they're recommended masks. We're certainly not forcing anybody to get vaccinated. So it's, we're, we're taking, we're, we're taking our time on that. And but I'll keep you posted. And now as far as access to the building, I, my anticipation would be when, when, when the orders are gone, June 2nd, we open back up. And and we'll likely well, you know, they've left it to, they've left it to private entities and public entities to decide whether or not you're going to require a mask in the facility. And I got to give that some thought, I guess. I'll be interested in what kind of direction we get from Summit County. Because it's, it's kind of the same thing. If you knew, well, first of all, it depends on where you're at on the science of it. And and do you believe vaccinations are helpful or are they not? There's a lot of hot button items there. But but at least what Summit County Public Health is suggesting is that, you know, that if you know everybody's vaccinated, fine, you don't need masks. If they're not, then maybe you ought to have masks. So that, I am kind of, I'll have, I'll have a better idea what to tell you on June 2nd, I guess, when I start seeing what some of the other cities are doing. What some of the other private, and right now there's a, it looks like a 50/50 split in terms of stores. You know, some stores are still requiring masks, some aren't, you know, so it's a tough one.
I think we installed those new Plexiglas barriers as such that were installed, not for COVID reasons, but for security reasons. So there's, there's very little, I think very little people that actually go into offices. They're, they're still out in the hall with the separation of the Plexiglas. Is that correct?
No, it is. Now, but it's, but we've also been hosting meetings in the, in council chambers. So we had a couple of those this week where we have people coming in, talking about zoning things or they're talking about economic development. And we go into the big room and we, you know, and and they're in the hallway, we greet them in the hallway, they're using the restrooms. We're interacting in the big rooms together. So, you know, that would be the only, only concern. I don't have a strong feeling one way or another on it. I don't want to be oppressive about it by any means. I just, but I don't, I don't care about it for me, but I, I'm really just trying to do what's best for for everybody who walks in the door here.
Yeah, well, you kind of addressed that when you talk about the council meeting, just everybody be respectful of each other. So that's all I have.
Any items for new business? Katie, do we have any public questions and answers?
We still do not. I think everybody's outside enjoying the weather and not watching.
It's a good guess.
Paul, do we have an executive session?
We do not.
So I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And our next meeting will be June 2nd at 6:00.
In council chambers.
Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.